Oh, that's sweet. Okay, everyone's here?
Yep.
The meeting is called back to order at 7:03 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sharon. Well, this is... This is a very special night. My goodness. All right, may I have a motion and a second that the agenda of January 21st, 2020 be approved as submitted? Any questions or comments, Liam? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, may I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as written on your agenda? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. May I have a motion that the Treasurers report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending November 30th, 2019 be approved? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right. Special reports.
Wonderful. We have two special reports this evening. We have our FTC Robotics team, who is very exciting, that will be presenting. This team's made up of middle school and ninth grade students, and I'll let them share why they're here, but we had a very great showing at the qualifier in Corning just a couple of weekends ago. And then we'll hear from Alan McNiff, our Director of Facilities, for our district security plan update. And just for the viewing public, this is Liam. He is my youngest, and my other son is actually part of FTC who's here presenting. And so, my wife can see the presentation. Liam's gonna hang out with me during the robotics presentation, but he won't be here after that for the meeting. So, do you have anything you'd like to say? That's great, okay. So, we'll have FTC. It's up to you. There is a handheld microphone there and a clicker right there on the table, too, for your presentation.
Hello, so, my name is T, and I would like to thank you guys for inviting us to tell you about FIRST and our team. FIRST stands for inspiration and recognition in science and technology. It is a competitive sport. Our competitions are held in gyms and arenas with hundreds of people watching. It is more than robots. We are responsible for our fundraising and we do outreach activities. It is a life experience. We get to know people from other schools and clubs and get to travel to different areas to compete. FIRST is amazing.
Hello, I'm Vin, and the FIRST program is huge. There are over 660,000 students and over 300,000 adult volunteers in the program. And there's over $80 million worth in scholarships available. Gracious professionalism, or GP, is the heart of everything we do at FIRST. GP means that you're doing your best work, and at the same time, you're going to respect the values of other students and team volunteers. One example of GP is when our team helps other teams fix their robot and then go to compete against each other. But we still want to win the match, but we want the match to be fair for everybody.
Hi, my name is Caitlin. FIRST has four levels: Junior FLO, FIRST Level League, FIRST Technical Challenge, and FIRST Robotics Competition. The program is designed to progress students through FIRST program from FIRST through graduation. In Penfield, we have all levels working closely together. Many of us have helped FLO with PB3 training, mentoring teams, by volunteering at events. Altogether, we have over 150 students in the FIRST program. This slide shows how FIRST programs in schools in the Rochester area. Penfield is one of only three schools in the area with all four levels.
Hello, I am Sasha. We hosted Finger Lakes Qualifier again this year, and for the first time, we hosted it in our own high school. This year, we had the Penfield FRC 15-11 team co-host with us and made the event bigger than before. We had a Junior FLO Expo and Awards, had a color code with the Boy Scouts, had Electric Mayhem display their Lego and stuff display, and broadcasted the event on Penfield TV and Roku. We also hosted the FTC kickoff for the Finger Lakes region and supported the Adam Box, a rookie team from the Rochester City School District. For other outreach activities, we attended the Rochester Ruckus FRC event to demonstrate FTC and FLO and demonstrated our robot at an FLO qualifier.
I'm Abby, and our team starts preseason in mid-July to redo some fun team building, important training on parts and tools, and some fundraising that we can squeeze in. Once school starts up, so do we. Our build season has a kickoff in early September, and we rebuild and rebuild the robot until our competitions start in January. New York Regional is a march where we'll be competing against teams from all over the state.
So, a normal competition day is... Well, we compete in about two or three competitions every year. So, a normal competition day is that we go and give a presentation semi-like this to about three judges, which helps the judges to determine which team they thought either had the best teamwork or robot design. So, this year, just like last week, in Corning, we won the Innovate Award, which... So, the judges thought that we had a very creative way of how our robot used its arm. You can see on our robot, we have an arm extension thing. So, there's many other awards, such as the Innovate Award. But there's also other awards that, like, go on with the robot game.
Hi, my name is Connor. Will you... Oh, sorry.
One of the nicest about the FTC team is they can fix all of it.
All right, one more.
One more try.
Take the village.
Welcome to the FIRST Tech Challenge game for the 2019-2020 FIRST Ride season. Skystone presented by Qualcomm. A team consists of up to two driver operators, a coach, a human player, and a robot. The robot must be built from materials identified in the game manual and fit within 18-inch spy mission, but may expand after the match begins. Each match is played with four randomly selected teams, two per alliance. Each alliance is allowed only one human player. Your opponent for one match may be your partner or another. The game is played on a twelve-foot square playing field with a foam tile floor and one foot by wall. Eight unique navigation versions are mounted on the field wall. Separating the left wing dock from the building dock is the skybridge, made up of two alliance specific bridges with four engines of clearance, and the neutral bridge, on a linear rail. Red and blue vehicles are kicked off in the loading dock corner. Red and blue buildings docks are kicked off in the building dock corner. Outside of the field wall are the alliance stations and human player stations. The main gate element is a stone, four by eight, and spy mission top. There are fifty-six stones between the gates. In addition, there are four special skystones with a navigation hardware wrapped over on the side. During game play, stones are assembled onto alliance-specific foundations. These are placed in the center of the building dock, but can be moved by robots during game play. Each team can design and build a special cast stone, which may be used to score additional points. Before each match, each place their robot on the field, touching the walls from their right. And twelve more stones are placed on the field, including four randomly loaded skystones. Each team may preload one cast stone onto their robot, or the human player may introduce it later in the game. Each match begins with a thirty-second autonomous game. During this game, there are a number of ways for teams to score, using only three program instructions and sensor input. Repositioning a foundation to the building site will earn ten points for the alliance. An alliance earns two points for each stone delivered to the building dock. Both the robots in the dock must be completed in the building dock. A skystone moved into the building dock earns ten points, only if it is the first or second skystone delivered. After that, skystones award only two points. If a robot can park over the midfield plate, it will earn five points. And finally, each stone placed in the foundation earns two points. Following the autonomous game is the two-minute driver control game. There are a number of ways to score. Each stone delivered completely through an alliance's bridge earns one point. However, a stone delivered through the neutral bridge does not earn any points. Each stone placed from the foundation earns one point. The last thirty seconds of the driver control game could be empty. During this time, robots may continue scoring stones, but there are also ways to earn bonus points. Placing a cast stone on the skybridge will earn a five-point bonus, plus one point for each set of stones. If a robot moves their foundation completely out of the building dock, their alliance earns fifteen points. An alliance will earn an additional five points for each robot parked in the building dock. There are many ways to score in skystones, but there are also rules that if not followed, will reward points for your opponent. For example, robots may not give over an opponent's skyscraper. Robots cannot block access to their opponent's field level. Robots are not allowed to reach outside of the plate. Robots cannot launch game actions or are not allowed to deliver things to the opponent. Has been a brief summary of the Skystone game. Her complete goal is to score an additional zero setup, increase player engagement, and check the UDA board, and call by her methods and propose to force score on the FIRST Tech Challenge. Gracious professionalism. Good luck to you, and have a great season.
Hi, my name is Connor. And we use an engineering design process to make the robot. We start by thinking of ideas and prototype ideas that...
Well...
And we make a...
Thank you so much. Board members, any questions or comments for the team? It seems like you put a lot of... I mean, that's a big time commitment every week, that you all show up and you're all there. And every Saturday, that's the bigger one to me.
Yeah.
It's going every Saturday morning. That's very impressive. And you all did a really, really good job on the presentation tonight. We appreciate very much that you came. Yes, Lisa?
Hi, thank you for being here. Two things: one is, there's so many rules. How do you figure that out? Because I got about halfway through the video and was completely lost. So, I'd love to hear about that. Secondly, I'm really pleased that you're here. I think, for myself and sometimes the community, we think about robotics and we think about the high school team and not really... I'm glad that you're here and you explained all the different levels and that there's really a lot of participation for all grades. And I think that's really super cool. So, thank you.
Can someone answer that question on how do you keep track of all of those rules?
Some of the basic rules, like what's the penalty and what's not. It's kind of the same for every year. So, in your first year, you kind of learn that stuff. And as for the certain rules of the points, honestly, I don't remember what all the points are. But there are some basic rules. Like, people who drive their robot during competitions might need to learn some more rules, kind of what's allowed and what's not, and what scores more points. And when we go into strategizing, we do focus on the rules, but it's not... We don't always have to memorize them, I would say. But just keeping a general idea of what the game's about. And it's also easier because we have on the field there's a tool and stuff, so if we ever... And we also have referees. So, we have mentors versus referees, so we can always ask them questions, too.
There's also an entire game manual on all of the rules. For the game, it's like twenty pages long... No, thirty pages long.
Wow. Wow.
There's two of them, one for every year. There's two game manuals. Part one, which is rules for every year, like the starting size and requirements for the robot. And game manual part two is for, like, the specific year game rules, like how much a skystone's worth, penalties for knocking over your opponent's skyscraper or something along the lines of that.
Any other questions? Mark?
I just wanted to say that it's impressive what you're doing, even in middle school and ninth grade, because what I see here, in terms of things like these, the design view process, engineering process, that's real-world stuff. That's things that people do, you know, in major companies. So, you're... This is well above what you would normally see in middle school, I think. So, it's very impressive. And I hope, you know, that you continue on because we have the high school robotics, but people graduate, people move on, and I hope you continue on and participate in that as well.
I was gonna ask what your plans are. Do you... Does everybody plan to continue on? Finish up through middle school and take it up in high school as well? I see a lot of head shake. Yep.
I have a question. How many of you started with a Lego?
Oh, good.
Okay, everybody did. Very good, and it just goes from there.
If I could just add one comment on the rules. One thing that might not have come out here, we didn't emphasize very much, but your point on middle school was reminding me. Penfield uses this program more of a JV program. That is not how most schools use this. FIRST offers FIRST Robotics Competition and limits it to ninth through 12, but the cost is very, very high every year. So, FIRST came up with FIRST Technical Challenge, which is much smaller. Cost is much more affordable. We... Our budget for everything, travel, competition, everything, is about $5,000 a game. Whereas the... I don't even know what 15-11 is.
A lot more.
Their competition fee is $5,000. But FIRST created this to give smaller schools and smaller groups an opportunity to participate. So, these students that are middle school students are actually competing against other schools' high school students.
Oh.
At Corning, we were the only middle school team there. And yet, we still won Innovate Award, second-place Motivate Award, and winning alliance.
Oh, that's very impressive.
So, if you think about it from that way, it's much more impressive.
Oh, yeah.
That's how we always run the program. And I would say we... At competitions, there's one or two middle school programs present. That's it. And all the other ones are high school programs.
Wow.
For me, anyway, makes this whole thing much more impressive.
Oh, absolutely. Well, it does for us as well. Yeah.
Good.
All right.
We'll come back soon.
Yes, please. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Good luck.
Yeah. Keep it up.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
I'll just share, as you guys are wrapping up, is that later in my presentation, I'll actually mention and show a picture from the Corning Qualifier. So, congratulations for that hard work. And if we just have... I know we applauded the kids. My son happens to be on this team, so I see it firsthand. If we could just get the board to do a quick applause for our teachers in the audience and the parents and mentors who really make this all come through. Thank you. Nice job. We'll transition to our second report and have Alan McNiff come up, talk about Security Enhancement Plan. And I'll just say a quick thank you, a little selfishly and personally, to this school board, who talks a lot about the whole student and talks about SCL. But when my youngest was in the audience, the board member said, "Bring him up, so he doesn't cry." So, I know it was a little bit tricky because he was chatting through the beginning and we transitioned him. But I think it just showcases the board. They really do practice what they preach. And so, thank you very much. And I'm sure we'll get lots of phone calls from movie directors now that they've seen him on TV.
Because he's got such a presence.
But thank you to the board. I appreciate that. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McNiff.
Thank you, Dr. Parton. Appreciate that. So, I'm here this evening to give you an update on where we stand with our Security Enhancement Plan. We talked to you a few months ago about the audit report and the direction that we're gonna be heading. And just wanted to give you a snapshot of where we are in time. So, the agenda that I have for you this evening to start off with is the overview of the plan. Basically, we want to develop, as Brandon Fox, my partner here, was unable to make it tonight, but we've been working on this cohesively together on what's the short and long range planning for the various items that were listed in the audit report. Some of them are easier to obtain, some of them take time, and some of them are more difficult. Some of them are financially related and so on. So we've been working on that for the last couple of months, so I'm gonna go through that. I'm going to give you progress of what we've done to date since we last provided you a report here at the meeting. And then finally, I'm gonna drop back to the reminder of the top five recommended priorities from the folks that did the audit for us and where we stand with those particular five. So like I said, the short and long range planning, we had to look at this from a multi-year approach. Not everything's achievable in one calendar year. So we wanted to look at, all right, where can we get the low hanging fruit first? So through the school year of 2019, 2020, we've looked at high priorities, what are quick gains, and initial planning for long-term, long-term work. And some of the examples I've listed up here, so we've obviously worked on the development of the behavioral intervention team. We've looked at consistent training and written protocol for hall monitors and front entrance staff, consistent training for administrators and teachers, implementation of a tip line, evaluation of capital project needs related to security, development of exterior lighting update plan, and exterior door audit. So you can see what I'm tying to talking about there. Some of these items we're able to achieve easily. Some of them are gonna have to do with long-term planning when it comes to capital project improvement pieces, and obviously financial impacts, of course, too. So it's the development, starting to look at some of those little things a little bit closer in detail for that first, first year. And the one thing that was important for Brandon and I as we're looking at this is how much time can we commit to do this? What can we really try to achieve during that time period? And I know the board has seen a more extensive list than what we're sharing with the public, but you can kind of get a taste on what we can try to achieve during that time period. So we want to be realistic as much as we could doing that. We do, we'd like to get everything that was listed on the audit report, sure, but it's not feasible with the amount of implication with the studying of the, the capital project needs and so on. So, so those are some examples for this school year. Moving along then into the following school year, basically the priorities that require time for development, the ones that we're working on now that we feel that we can probably implement into that next piece, which includes the safety resource officer, which we've been discussing, full update to our building emergency response plans, selection of capital project items related to security. So as we've been, as we work on those towards the end of this year, we'll start to implement them for consideration into the next capital project. And then audit and upgrade plan for security cameras, access control, and intrusion detection. So that's really gonna take time. We have nine hundred thousand square feet of building square footage. We have fifty-two, fifty-three acres on the outside of the building. Looking at what our current camera infrastructure is, looking at where do we want to look at their enhancement for various different things. So that's gonna take time. We won't be able to achieve that. I'll be honest. We've got great systems, but let's start looking at the next level of detail. That's gonna take us some time to go through that. We're gonna have stakeholder meetings with the principals a little bit further and other folks that are, have integral pieces to that aspect of thing with our development of that plan. So we know it's gonna take us some time to do that. And then the following year, the school year 21, 22, this is where we're looking at some of the lower priority needs and we know that are gonna just take us some heavy lifting to get there. So an example of that is the audit of our current procedures for after-school events, developing a written plan and then implementation. We have lots of different buildings that are used for many different things. High schools prioritization, of course. We know that's gonna take us time. It's not something we can just flip a switch and get that to the bay that we wanted to effectively go for the long term. So we're gonna look at what is gonna be the best practice for us to do that. We know we can't achieve all of that now, so we're gonna develop that in the next year of 21, 22. And then here's a, another simple item that was listed there, creating consistent fire evacuation maps throughout the building. So each of the buildings has fire evacuation maps in each of their classrooms. They're just a little different. So it's just making everything consistent. And so the graphics look the same. So not something we need to jump on right now. We can certainly have time to develop it, so it looks a little bit more consistent. So progress after our previous presentation. First, what I would say is most significant is the behavioral intervention team or committee that's been formed and has started to have routine meetings. As you know, Dr. Putnam and Brandon Fox lead that charge here. But so far, that's provided some really good response to some items that have come up throughout the district. So again, that'll be continued move forward and development of that team will certainly go on as we go through the remainder of the school year. Training session has been scheduled for hall monitors and front entrance staff. And I'll talk about that a little bit more, a little bit further. Training sessions are being set up for administrators and teachers for next school year. Again, it's all about the message of consistency. And Brandon Fox is working with a security consultant on details related to our district-wide and building security plans for suggested revisions. Here's the point that I wanted to bring up with regards to our security consultant. Though, when I refer to that consultant, it's not the consultant that did the audit report for us. They're obviously not local, but we needed to find someone that could be closer to us to be able to help us that has New York-related background and knows schools in our region. So we've actually partnered with Steve Chatterton from Grease. He is the director of security over there. He's had very extensive knowledge and his team has been very successful on that side. So we've partnered with him to provide us some of the insight that he has. So as I start to look at some of these training things I mentioned up here, he's a critical part to that. He's helping us develop that with what he uses with his staff. So for instance, when we talk about the hall monitors and front entrance staff, he recognizes what are the priorities that we need to focus in on and how much can they really absorb, right? So I'll talk a little bit later. We've got one day right now set up in January here because we have limited amount of time with these staff because they're throughout the buildings. How do we get them together? So during their conference day coming up, we're able to achieve and bring them in for a half a day session to start getting the baseline, getting this consistency throughout the district of the protocol that Steve and his team over at Grease have implemented for general process and procedures. And we're all doing the same thing. So it's getting us in that next step. And then we'll continue to develop that training as we continue going, moving on. So the next item on here was the site lighting improvements, LED lighting upgrades to the following areas. So these are some things that I've already jumped on, and I'll show you a couple of images here. But to me, it's, I know something our team, our, our buildings and ground staff can start working on. We know that there's areas that we, that really could use some attention. This gives us the support to move forward a little bit. And we've, at this point, done some high school bus loop. We've jumped, we've increased LED lighting for there. The Bay Trail pathway to the gymnasium, Bay Trail and Scrivener sidewalks on the whole west side. Some folks have may ever notice it. It is very significant at Bay Trail when you go from the orange, low pressure sodium bulbs to now we're, we've got LED lighting fixtures that are much more efficient and provide a much greater spread of light. And you'll see some of these on some of our security camera images that I have here in the presentation here in a moment. But we're gonna, gonna continue to move forward. So I'm in the process right now of getting the remaining parking lot lights for Bay Trail after we've done some test samples of some light fixtures that are available. And we'll start the installation of those. We're expecting some of them this week and then we'll continue. So what's nice about my staff is they're not afraid of the winter and the cold. They'll keep going. They enjoy it. They like to see that. It's, again, goes back to that ownership of, of being part of the team here to make things progress. And to them, it's very fulfilling. So here is Scrivener's west sidewalk looking north. Before, take a look at the left-hand side. You can see the sidewalk to some degree. And if you look at the right-hand side, how much more light spread you get and the visibility that's now visible from our security camera on that facade, pretty significant for us. And in reality, it's even much so. The image just shows you kind of the clarity that you'd certainly pick up now. Here's another example, essentially the other direction, looking south. You can see the before and now the after with the LED lighting. That's much cleaner white light. And I did not doctor these.
Yeah, I was, yeah.
No editing here.
No editing.
Bay Trail, the pathway to the gymnasium. For those who are familiar with Bay Trail, parents have to park over in the bus loop area, then walk up to the gymnasium from this side, as you can see here. The, what's important to know here on the left-hand side is the before and obviously the right is the after. But that first light that's right next to the occasion closure, which is our gas enclosure, that was the test light, so it looks nice already. But look down the pathway behind you, you can see the difference between that nice old yellow orangish color light. And now we've got a clear line of sight along there, which provides a little bit easier, just even for simple things, walking down the sidewalk and what's the ice look like? What does this look like? Those type of things are certainly noticeable. So finally, here.